All right. Good evening, everybody. The study session of June twenty eight, twenty twenty two is called the order. Donna, do your roll call, please.
Yes, I will. We have Councilmember Bode on Zoom.
I'm here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Good.
Here.
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 All right. Tonight, we're discussing the Blake and Boise decisions. So the attorney Kathleen Haggard has information for us.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
And can you see me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can. I can see you while you're very tiny on my screen. So I do have a presentation, and I actually gave this presentation this morning at the task force meeting, and I think a couple of you were present. So bear with me as I go through it all again. I'm going to go ahead and start my screen share and just give me a thumbs up if it if it works. Is it working?
Almost.
It should be. Now you're now you're tiny now.
Okay. Can you see the presentation, though?
Yes.
Great. All right. So as the mayor indicated, this presentation is primarily about the legal framework and particularly involving a couple of major cases and also some state legislation that was in response to the cases. And I titled the presentation not just a housing problem because I think it's important to understand that there are all sorts of dimensions to this issue. It housing is a big part of it, but it's also there's a legal framework to be concerned about. There's also a host of social justice and socioeconomic issues that play into it. And so one thing that I also want everyone to understand is I've been the city attorney in Shelton since two thousand and seven. And so I've been around cities for a very long time. I have never been a criminal prosecutor. So I'm not involved in that aspect of it. So if there are any questions that are really specific to criminal law enforcement, I'll defer those to the chief for answering, but this is just sort of the thousand-foot broad legal framework. So the first, excuse me while I figure out how to advance this.
We lost your share.
Yeah, for some reason, it's not letting me advance the slides. Let me try it again. Okay, is it back up?
Yes.
There you have the slide.
Okay. Uh, let's try it again. No, it's still not allowing me to. Okay, um, well, how about that? Did it advance?
Here we go.
Right. Okay, this will work well enough. It won't actually be a slideshow, but close enough. So the first major court decision that I wanted to mention was a case that didn't directly have an impact on the issues that you're seeing. It was really the state legislature's follow-up to the case. And that is State v. Blake. And that came out in twenty twenty one at the beginning of the year. And the reason that I first indicate that State v. Blake was the correct result is because I do believe it was correctly decided from a legal standpoint. So what happened in that case was that the Supreme Court ruled that criminalizing unknowing possession of a controlled substance is unconstitutional. So the facts of that case were that there was a young woman who had been served a warrant for potential involvement in some stolen vehicles. And the police found in the coin pocket of her jeans, methamphetamine. And you know, those of you who know how small a coin pocket of jeans is, that gives you an idea of how much quantity was actually found. And she responded that she didn't know that the meth was there, that it was a pair of second-hand jeans that she'd actually borrowed from a friend. And she had friends also testify that they've never known her to use drugs. She testified that she's never used drugs, and she did not know that the meth was there. So on those facts, the court ruled that someone who had no idea they were in possession of controlled substances cannot be charged. At the time, Washington was in an extreme minority of states that had what's called a strict liability law for drug possession. And possession of controlled substance, except for marijuana, was a felony. And pretty much every other state or close to every other state had this express knowing requirement in the statute. And the courts, when they got these cases, were already reading this element into the cases and not sustaining convictions or allowing charges to proceed when there wasn't a showing that the person was aware that they had drugs on them. But the court found that the entire law is unconstitutional, and therefore the entire law is enforceable. And that leads us to the next piece of it, which is the chaotic result part of it. So the upshot of the Blake decision was it's retroactive to nineteen seventy one, meaning that it requires an immediate end to all prosecutions for simple drug possession. And anyone who was convicted of this between nineteen seventy one and the present could request that their conviction be vacated. Bench warrants that had been issued to pick people up on simple possession charges were recalled. A certain number of inmates were released and sentences were modified. And the arguably most expensive part of this was reimbursement of legal financial obligations, meaning court fines and fees that were levied for simple possession needed to be refunded. And there is state funding that cities and counties are receiving to help offset the burden of refunding those obligations. So this has been a very expensive and very time-consuming fix, as I'm sure. I see representatives from the court on the line, and I'm sure that the the prosecutor and police can confirm that as well. But the piece of it that's more relevant when you're talking about homelessness and how you can respond from a law enforcement standpoint was how the legislature responded to the Blake decision. And that was in ESB fifty four seventy six in twenty twenty one. And the simple piece of it was that it added the word knowing to the statute. That was a no-brainer. It also reduced the penalty for simple possession of controlled substance, any controlled substance, from a felony to a misdemeanor. And encouraged, but did not require prosecutors to refer people in possession of controlled substances to services rather than criminal prosecution. It decriminalized possession of paraphernalia for personal use. And it required, and this piece of it was a requirement, local law enforcement, you have to defer divert individuals to services, assessment and services for drug use at least twice before you can refer them for prosecution. So you pick someone up for various things, and one of those things is possession. They have to be referred for services. Pick them up again, refer for services, and then on the third strike, if you will, they can face prosecution. One thing to point out is this did not affect arguably more serious drug crimes like manufacture and distribution of drugs. So that's the end of the discussion on the Blake decision and the legislative follow-up. I can't hear anyone particularly well, but does anyone have questions? No questions?
Not for this part.
Okay, so moving on to the second big case, that's Martin v. City of Boise, and this was from the Ninth Circuit. The Ninth Circuit, as you all probably know, is the federal circuit that includes Washington State, as well as California, Oregon, Hawaii, a number of other states. It's the largest circuit in the country. And in that decision, the Ninth Circuit held in twenty eighteen that sleeping overnight in a public place cannot be criminalized if the person has no alternative. So meaning they don't have any reasonable access to indoor shelter. The simple fact that they are sleeping outside because essentially they're compelled to sleep outside cannot be a criminal offense. And the city of Boise in that case argued that shelter space was in fact available. But one of the problems with that was that, number one, there wasn't enough shelter space, as there isn't enough anywhere pretty much. And some of the shelters that were working in the Boise area were operated by religious institutions, which by itself was fine. It was great. But some of the shelters were actually compelling people to participate in religious exercise. And that's a violation of someone's First Amendment rights if they don't follow the particular religion that they're being compelled to exercise. So on that basis, the court deemed that in those circumstances, that shelter bed was not truly available. This ruling did not affect ordinances that are commonly called sit-lie ordinances. And those essentially find on a narrow basis that people can't sit or lie on a public sidewalk in certain areas of a city during certain hours. So about twenty or so years ago, twenty twenty-five years ago, the city of Seattle had its famous sidewalk sitting ordinance. Where at that point in time, you really couldn't walk through downtown or through the Pike Place Market or some of the more touristy areas without stepping over people, tripping over people. It was a pretty significant problem at that time. And so the city of Seattle passed an ordinance precluding people from sitting or lying on the sidewalk in very specific narrow areas of the city during business hours. And the Ninth Circuit ruled that that was acceptable. And the city of Everett a few years ago enacted its own sit-lie ordinance because they were having a similar problem in their downtown. So Martin v. City of Boise does not prohibit those types of ordinances. The Boise case also doesn't prohibit ordinances that prohibit obstruction of the right-of-way. So for example, if someone is pitching their tent and blocking the entire sidewalk, that could be precluded. And courts that have ruled on this issue after Martin v. City of Boise have ruled that cities and counties can have specific areas in the public realm that are not open to camping at any time, as long as the entire city or county isn't off limits. And one of these cases was from one of the Hawaiian Islands, which was incorporated as its separate county. And it found that it had a few narrow areas of its public parks that were very environmentally sensitive and very unusually sensitive to this type of activity. And so it wanted to make those parks off limits, and the court ruled that it could do that, regardless of whether shelter space was available. So in response to Martin v. City of Boise, in twenty twenty one, the end of the year, we, well, the council, as you recall, enacted Shelton Municipal Code, Chapter eight point seven four, which was a new provision of your code. And it made public camping a misdemeanor, but only when either the person is informed that shelter services indoors are available and fails or refuses to go. Or the shelter is available, but they won't accept that person due to that person's criminal record or unsafe behavior. And this is a very simple law. It's very straightforward. It goes on to say that if someone is removed from their campsite pursuant to the law, then their personal property can be cleared, the tent and their other personal effects. We can throw away whatever objects are very clearly refuse or dangerous, unsanitary. We will collect and store whatever personal property is not clearly trash and allow for a period of time to redeem that property. The ordinance defines what available means. And it means that we have verified, a city staff member has verified that there is a shelter that has a bed and will accept the person. The shelter is free to that person. Obviously, it's not free to the taxpayers or the nonprofit or whoever is paying for it, but it's free to the person. That person can get to the shelter free of charge. And that can be that we transport them, they're able to arrange transportation on their own. They're able to walk, whatever, they're able to get there without having to expend money to get there. And then, of course, as I mentioned from the Boise case, the shelter does not impose requirements that are unrelated to safe operations, for example, religious exercise. Just a word about clearing tent encampments, because that can be a big issue, too. Certainly, it's been a huge issue in the city of Seattle that has just these enormous unregulated tent encampments in various places that have been cleared over the years. There was a case out of the Ninth Circuit, City of Los Angeles versus Leaven, that found that, yes, these tent encampments can be cleared, but the city must give a minimum of seventy-two hours' advance notice, must hold any belongings, again, usable belongings, not garbage, not unsanitary refuse, for a reasonable period of time to allow reclaiming. There's a state law case, Washington State, State v. Pippin, out of the Supreme Court, that found that if someone is living in a tent or a vehicle that is considered a dwelling unit and is protected from unreasonable search and seizure under the Fourth Amendment, just like someone's house would be. So just like the police can't just barge into your house without a warrant, these dwelling units are entitled to similar protections from unreasonable search and seizure. They're arguably going to have a lesser degree of protection just because there, there, there's not very much between the occupant and the sidewalk, if you will. There's a lot more visibility there, but there's still a modicum of protection. And I believe in July, you're going to be considering another ordinance that talks about these unregulated tent encampments or just, you know, single, double campsites that pop up on private property and how to go about addressing those when they, when they create a public nuisance. In twenty twenty, there was another significant case, City of Seattle v. Long, which went to the Washington State Supreme Court. And Mr. Long was living in a truck. He didn't have a home. He was living in his truck. And he had parked in a parking lot for a City of Seattle building. And his truck wasn't running so great. He was having trouble driving it. And he had parked in that particular location because it was close to the VA where he was receiving services. But the city, after giving him notice, towed his truck and charged him the impound fees. The city did reduce the fines and fees to about five hundred dollars, but he still had no means of paying that. So a nonprofit legal organization took his case and argued that the impound fees and fines were excessive punishment in violation of the Eighth Amendment. They also argued that towing his vehicle, because he was living in it, violated the Homestead Act. That particular question wasn't addressed by the court because it was found not to be ripe for consideration. But just know that it's out there. The court did agree that the fines and fees were excessive punishment and violation of the Eighth Amendment and ruled that, you know, not that you can never charge these fees, excuse me while I block the sun. Not that these fines and fees can never be charged, just that at the impound hearing, the court needs to consider the individual's ability to pay those fines. And keep in mind, too, that this case does not preclude impounds in any way, shape, or form. If someone is blocking a stop sign, they're parked in the fire lane, they're in front of a fire hydrant, they're blocking, they're blocking traffic, they're in a tow-away zone. They can absolutely be towed because that's a matter of public health, welfare, and safety. The court also discussed the fact that Mr. Long was parked in a parking lot for the city of Seattle. He was not in a residential neighborhood, leaving open the argument that if he had been on the sidewalk in a residential neighborhood, then perhaps towing his vehicle would have been more reasonable. So this is my final slide, and just a disclaimer, I'm not a housing expert. I'm not a homelessness expert. I've been a city attorney for a really long time, and so I've been around this issue. And these are just issues that have come to my attention from doing this work and from reading the case law and kind of just trying to pay attention to the issue. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, homelessness isn't just a housing problem. It's really a combination of issues. Lack of housing is a big one. There is a lack of housing, sheer numbers in our communities. And because there is a lack of housing, a shortage of housing, that's driven up the cost of housing dramatically. Rents have risen dramatically, and rents have risen faster than people's incomes. That's created a real upward pressure on rents and a downward pressure on the people who need housing. The second big component is mental health. A lot of people who are not able to maintain stable housing have mental health issues. And the third big factor is substance abuse. There was a major uptick in homelessness along with the opiate crisis. And so some of the solutions that I see discussed in the forums that I have been to and the readings that I have done include short-term solutions, medium-term solutions, and long-term solutions. And just to throw those out, obviously, shelter space, overnight shelters, emergency shelters, there is not enough of that. There's nowhere close to enough of that. And cities are working very, very hard to try to develop that. The city where I live just purchased an old retirement home that had been vacated and turned it into a shelter with sixty beds. Cities such as Seattle and Spokane, I know, and other cities as well, are developing real-time dashboards that allow law enforcement that allow social services, professionals, as well as shelters to connect in real time, to be able to see the numbers and see where the beds are. There are also cities and counties and nonprofits opening day facilities for services such as showers, toileting, secure storage, phone charging was a big issue. You know, if you're homeless and you're trying to remedy that by staying in touch with your providers, maybe looking for jobs, you're going to need a place to shower, you're going to need a place to charge your phone. And so making those facilities available is very important. Regulated tent cities, those are something that really no one wants to see in their neighborhood. But in fact, they are much safer than having these unregulated tent cities that are popping up all over the place with no constraints. And by regulated tent city, what I generally mean are normally, it's a religious institution that makes a parking lot or part of their property available for a tent city, for campers to come in and put up tents. They are required to have security. They're required to have sanitation facilities and have screening from surrounding neighborhoods that may be sensitive. So they are, they turn out to be a much better solution than having these unregulated tents popping up all over the place. Another thing are safe parking programs that are offered by public agencies and nonprofits where people can go and park a vehicle overnight, so they're not parked on the street in a residential neighborhood or in a commercial area. And then a medium-term solution, transitional housing, meaning when people are ready to move from try to transition into long-term housing, transitional housing can help them take that step. There's permanent supportive housing. There's a facility that opened a few years ago in the city where I live. I just heard about a brand-new facility in the city of Everett that opened recently, which is a recognition that there's a certain segment of the population that is always going to struggle staying in housing because of mental illness, because of substance abuse, because of other, other issues. And so permanent supportive housing is housing combined with wraparound services that are there long term. And then finally, affordable housing is another major component in this. Under the Growth Management Act, the, the state legislature and the Department of Commerce are leaning very hard right now on primarily the more urban counties, King, Paris, Snohomish, Clark, Spokane, those counties that have more population, to plan for more affordable housing and not just plan for it, but to make it a reality, because that is just very much needed. Unfortunately, in some areas, we're seeing opposition to that, either from the municipalities themselves or from the community. But that is going to continue to be a struggle with our state legislature and state agencies needing to see that as a long-term solution. So that is all I have. I will go ahead and stop sharing, and then maybe I can see it all better. Are there any questions?
I was under the assumption that the Homestead Act is the way it was set up many years ago, that you, you claim a piece of property that no one else owns, right? So how are they getting, is that right?
Well, I'm not exactly sure, and I think Kathleen mentioned that the court didn't decide that because the case was decided on other issues, so they didn't have to decide that question.
Okay. Yeah, the court didn't issue, didn't address it in that case. In Washington State, the Homestead Act essentially provides that that your dwelling unit can't be attached as enforcement activity. So someone can't take your house that you're living in as an enforcement of an obligation. And so it's different than the homestead where you can go take a piece of property and if you farm it for a number of years, it's yours. It's, it's the same word, but it's a different meaning. But yes, that's correct. In the city of Seattle, Long case, that argument was made but not squarely addressed because the court found that it wasn't ripe for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
To be mayor.
It was in the Boise language, you spoke of sleeping overnight. It seems oddly specific to sleeping and the time of day. Does that apply during daytime? Is it sleeping? Is it laying down on the ground? Kind of what's the? Is it black and white on that front?
Yeah, the Boise case was very specific to sleeping overnight. And where I think the daytime issues come in is with the sit-lie ordinances. Because people tend to sleep at night and need Uh, because people tend to sleep at night and need, you know, a place to kind of bunker down at night. That's a separate consideration from, you know, in the daytime when arguably people can move around better and other people are trying to access businesses. So yes, the Martin v. Boise case was very specific to overnight um lodging, if you will.
Thank you. And a follow up question on location. How far away is too far away for a shelter location?
It really depends on the facts. Um, I would think that it's going to be a combination of number one, can they get there for free? That's the biggest consideration. Because if they can't, then we're in violation of our own ordinance and as well as uh Martin v. City of Boise. So that's one consideration. Another consideration is um are they tied to services in a particular area? So is someone going to say, you know, if you ship me to Tacoma, I can't access my um probation officer or my um counselor or my uh physician that's prescribing me my medication for my bipolar disorder. Um, you could potentially run into those types of issues. And in fact, that issue came up squarely in the city of Seattle. The long case where um he said, you know, the reason I parked here is because I'm trying to go to the VA for treatment. And the court was very sympathetic to that. So I think we have to be aware to the possibility that um, yeah, it might be reasonable to get some people to Olympia if Olympia has space. But it's not going to be reasonable for everybody.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kathleen.
You're welcome.
All right, any discussion, questions for Jeff?
I do.
Okay.
I have a list. Am I allowed to go through all of them or just one at a time?
For it.
Okay, so um first of all, if we have to hold their property for sixty days, where do we hold it?
Great question. Uh, so we have a Conex box uh at the, this is one of the things Chief Moody was working on right before uh he retired. I have to waste hard treatment.
It might be complicated to know whose is whose things, but anyway.
Well, we have, we had to set that up. If you remember, we did the big camp cleanup on the hillside uh right above SR three.
Mm hmm.
Uh, so we set that up at that time. It's part of the clean.
Okay, and then um she said that the shelter cannot impose like religious requirements. But what rules can they make?
Anything for the safe op- safe operation of the shelter. So they can make uh requirements like no weapons, um that type of thing.
And then um so it said clearing temporary encampments, they need twenty four hour requirement ahead of time.
Seventy.
Seventy two, okay, seventy two hours. Uh, is this for public private property or what if it was in my yard?
Uh huh. Uh, so well, if it was in your front yard, uh presumably it wouldn't be allowed to be established there. Um, typically what we're looking at there is uh somewhere on private property in the woods. So like for the one, and I'll go back to the example of the camp above SR three, we actually posted that for a week uh prior to, just to make sure we overdid the seventy two hour requirement. But in your front yard, I
Or if I have an empty lawn.
Yeah, then that would have to be a seventy two hour uh notification.
And then um
For us to do.
Okay, um and then the part about if your home is your camper, what if this dead person has a history of violence, maybe against children, but they're, maybe they're parked near a school, a daycare, a park where children play. Uh, are there rules and guidelines on that?
I think that would be separate. I believe it is six hundred foot, if I'm not mistaken.
If they are a uh sex registrant where they have those conditions, then that would apply whether they are homeless or not. Uh, and enforcement can be taken on that depending on what their conditions are.
Okay. And then um, so there's, this is one that just came into my head. It really doesn't have anything to do with what she talked about too much, but like campers that are in town. I have seen them plugged into public entities for power. So do we have rules and guidelines on that, like the clock tower? What are the rules and guidelines on that?
Well, they have to have permission to access our power. So uh we could disconnect them from power, whether we could make them immediately be just a different uh different.
Right, but you would ask them to unplug.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And the same is true for private businesses. Like if uh there's a water connection.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? Comments? Any items for new discussion? Nope, the study session is adjourned at six thirty five P M.